I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It is Thursday, January ninth, six P. M. We are in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. We would start with the prayer from Mr. Tony Melinder and followed by the pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight thanking you for the many gifts and graces that you bestowed upon us here in the year 2024. And as we enter into this year 2025 at our first meeting here tonight, we continue to ask for your wisdom and guidance as we move forward with the business for our great city. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with the consent of the. Okay, did everyone have a chance to go over the meeting minutes from last month and the attorney's invoices?
A motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Pedrick and a second by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, next we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time, Ms. Keisha?
I have Ms. Delane Seeker.
Hi, Ms. Delane, come up. And you've been introduced, so go ahead.
I have had the privilege of being part of a kayak club that's been developed by Tammy Owen, and there's lots of ladies that have been doing some kayaking. My thought is, I'm wondering if there's any way possible that we could do something to help the poor river and the unsightly docks that are along all, not all of them are unsightly, but many of them are unsightly in the Carabelle River, especially from when you leave the bridge out to the Gulf. And there's a lot of loopers that come through here, and there's a lot of loopers who spend money in this town, and they're coming in, and it just, it just looks not very pleasant. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I have no idea what you could do because I think it's public property, that people own those docks. I don't think the city owns any of it other than the pavilion. But I just, I just wanted to mention it to you that it just, it makes us, their first welcoming is like, oh, my gosh, this looks like a derelict town. And we don't want that. That's my only thing.
Thank you so much. From what I understand, and I have an idea of where you're talking about, that is privately owned. And I believe from the landline out to the river, we have no jurisdiction over. Is that correct?
That's correct. The mean high water mark out into the river, we, that's sovereign land. And typically those docks are permitted through D. E. P. So there may be, you may want to contact the state to be a possible remedy, but.
Mr. Russell, do you have something?
Yeah, in, in our pursuit of, of grant programs, we have found one with F. W. C., and maybe this would be more appropriate to discuss with C. R. A. But there is a, there is a grant for boating infrastructure, and eligible projects include a renovation of boating infrastructure slips, docks, fixed piers, breakwaters, dredging, et cetera. So that's a possible program.
Okay. Do you have something?
Mr. Russell. Mr. Russell, I'm not real familiar, but I do know what you just described. Now, my question to you on that, is that for private citizens or is that for public government entities?
The description here doesn't, doesn't describe that either way, so I don't know.
I don't know the, the official answer to it, but I inquire just a little bit, if you will, through the grapevine, and it's not for private. It's for public.
Okay, okay.
As an example, if the city of Carabelle needed to build a boat ramp.
Right, dock, sure.
Improve a boat ramp or dock that's owned by the city of Carabelle or Franklin County, then that's available. But I don't know that for sure. But that's the impression that I got from the questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay. I personally know the owner of that property, and some friends of mine do too. He comes, he doesn't live here in Carabelle, but he comes and visits often, and I know he stated many times that he has plans for that building and the dock. But he's not here often.
Absolutely.
If I hear anything, I'll let you know. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. We will move on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing to know.
Commissioner Pedrick?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Gray?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
And Commissioner Melinder?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Saved all the room for me. All right, I hope everyone had a great New Year's and holiday season and got a little relaxing in before it got too cold. Yesterday at the T. D. C. meeting, we approved the T. D., for the T. D. C. to host a seminar on marketing and business in a tourism-related area. They're planning, they're in the planning stages now, but it should be in early April, and they're gonna have it at the Armory in Appalachia. There's gonna be a speaker from Visit Florida, Ms. Tana from the Y. Two K. Web Group, Mr. John Solomon from the T. D. C. in Apalachicola Chamber, and they'll be talking about how to best utilize social media, print media, radio and television advertising, and branding. This will be free for business owners, event coordinators, nonprofits, or those in charge of marketing for these entities. I'll continue to update you all as the planning progresses on my mayor Facebook page and at these meetings. I highly encourage our local businesses, our Chamber of Commerce, and would like our city administrator to attend this seminar to learn how to grow your marketing reach for our community. I think this is an excellent opportunity for many of us to utilize, learn how to utilize the free tools that we have at our fingertips to grow our businesses and let people know we're here and come visit. Our next two First Fridays coincide with concerts at Rio Carabelle. Businesses in downtown Carabelle will be open late with specials and refreshment, refreshments. Our new business downtown, Wild River Nutrition, will continue to have local vendors set up on Marine Street in the grassy area as well. So there's a little more to do and look forward to. And mark your calendars for Culture Crawl. The, it's hosted by the Carabelle History Museum, and they have that scheduled for Saturday, March twenty-second. They will be featuring classic cars on Marine Street again, which has been a big hit for the last couple of years. If you have a classic show car, please reach out to me or the History Museum, and we'll save you a spot. I'm sure Ms. Tamara will talk a little bit more about it as well. And that's all I have at this time.
Amen, Mayor. Can I go back to the boating infrastructure grant? For the docks?
If you wish.
So eligible applicants, local governments, Native American tribes, port districts, non-profit organization, private organizations, state agencies, and some special purpose districts is all that's eligible for it.
Thank you for finding that. Anything else? From anyone else? Okay. Now we'll move on to staff reports. First will be our city attorney, Mr. Hartman.
Nothing, not on the agenda, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Courtney, do you have anything for us?
I sent out the department reports. Does anybody have any questions on department reports? All right. We have our hurricane loss mitigation program. We need to award that bid. I only had one contractor. It's the same contractors that's done all of the other ones for the last, how many ever years we've had that grant? And it's for Florida retrofit, so I'm asking for us to go ahead and award the bid to Florida retrofit.
Make a motion to approve.
That was motion by Commissioner Melinder. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Commissioner Pedrick. Do we have any discussion or questions regarding this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Also, we had advertised for a street and road employee last month, and I spoke with Dustin beginning of the week. We didn't get it on the agenda, but he is ready to hire for that, and his recommendation is for Mr. Nathan Tarantino, and he is here in the room today. So if you all agree with that, we'd like to motion to hire Nathan.
I'll make that motion to hire. How you pronounce it?
Tarantino.
Tarantino, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Melinder. Any discussion? Do you guys have any questions for Mr. Tarantino?
Nathan, just getting with Dustin and when you're starting dating.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Welcome aboard.
That's all I have.
All right. And Ms. Keisha, do you have some dates for us? Get your calendars ready.
All right, excuse me, so we will have, we have a P. and Z. meeting scheduled for the sixteenth. As of now, I don't have anything for that. If they turn something in by tomorrow, then we, they could make the agenda. But we will be closed on January the twentieth for Martin Luther King Day. City Hall office will, January twenty-first, or yeah, twenty-first will be our C. R. A. meeting at one-thirty. And our next regular city meeting will be February sixth, six o'clock.
Okay, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you for that. And we'll move on to our city engineer, engineer, Mr. Russell Large.
All right, thank you. We're wrapping up the Lighthouse project with D. E. P. We are addressing some comments that we received on the wastewater treatment plant permit renewal. We did receive comments, so we're addressing those, and also working on the permit for the water supply well number five. We did have bids opened on December seventeenth. That's for the Landmark East and West Sewer Rehabilitation. And this, this item will require action from the commission tonight. We have a recommendation of award to, in situ form. They're out of Missouri. They were the low bidder with a total contract amount of one million seventy-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Both, both of their bid amounts were, were well within the grant construction budget. So we would ask the board to, to move to approve that, subject to approval by Florida Commerce.
Go ahead.
That was gonna be. Excuse me. That was gonna be part of my question, Mr. Russell, is. How many bidders did we have?
We received two bids.
Two bids. And do we know anything about the background and reputation of the bidders? Or is that what Florida Commerce is going to look at?
No, we did, Florida Commerce, I don't think they will review that. We reviewed some of their history. They, they do work all over the country. This is specialized work, and generally they do have to travel. So. I'm, I'm comfortable with this, with this firm.
Okay.
Both firms were, one was out of Missouri, and so like, like Russell said, it is very specialized work, and so there's not a lot of local contractors that do this. So you get one company that's based over here out of St. Augustine, and one that's based out of, well, they had an office in Missouri, but I think Mississippi was where he said the closest office was for one of them, so there wasn't anything local.
Okay, well, what I'm alluding to, and I feel pretty confident I know that we wouldn't find any contractor locally, locally meaning right here around our immediate area. But is this the first time we've had work of this nature done?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I think you understand where I'm coming from is kinda wanna make sure. I've had past experience that the low bids are not always the best bid. You and I've had this conversation. And sometimes you have to look at the quality and of a company's background and make sure that they are gonna produce and give the work or the quality work that we're, we're needing and asking for in our bids. And that's the reason for my questions, not to labor it purposely, but just to make sure of that. And you actually come out and spoke and said that you're confident in you, with this construction company. So I feel like that actually something's telling you that they're a reputable company.
Yes, they, they've been around. They've done work all over the country. I, you know, I, without, I haven't reviewed their work actually in the field, but understanding their experience, they have a lot of it.
Do you know anything about the other contractor? The other bidder?
No more than I know about this contractor.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Large?
Yes.
I'll motion to approve.
Pardon me, subject to approval by Florida Commerce.
Correct.
Got it. Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Melinder. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Gray. Is there any discussion? Do we have any other questions regarding this? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
All right, thank you. A quick update on our grant projects. Baywood improvements were not approved by this cycle. It's, it's my understanding that Baywood was in the top five. In fact, it was number five. There were only five projects that were submitted to the central office, so, so Chippely ranked those projects. Baywood was number five in the district. That was sent to the central office, and central office decided not to, to fund that project. The application resuminal date is March the fourteenth, so we intend to resummit that package. And, and also have a conversation with the district staff about how this should, how this should be ranked in, in the next cycle. Go ahead.
Nah, that's, there's something else that I think that we can do there that the city administrator and I have discussed and talked about. And that's okay. We'll do that. Thank you, sir.
All right. For the Landmark West Sewer Improvement Projects, we're, we're expecting an award. You know, we, we were expecting it in December, then it was January. Now they're telling us they're not providing a timeframe for the award, so I'm, I'm not sure what to. So I'm, I'm not sure what to report on that, but it, it should be soon. And then the, the Ryan Drive and the Potite, I'm sorry, Ryan Drive and the wastewater treatment plant items were not awarded this cycle. So we'll, we'll get back in for that cycle as it, as it's open. Okay?
And when will we get back into that cycle?
I don't know, I don't know the exact date of when that opens again, but we'll, we'll find out and make sure that we're part of it. Okay, and that's, that's all I have from our report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Large? All right, next is our advisory board reports. Who's first? Mr. Steve Allen from the Lighthouse.
Thank you. Happy, merry, merry, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas next year. So just a couple announcements. First of all, if you, this weekend on Sunday is the full moon event. It's the wolf moon. So if you hear any howling, it's not necessary to pull in your chickens. It's probably Marian Morris up there or others. If you would like to give it a try, you'll get a discount on the climb. So everybody's welcome for that. And then we'll be having our third annual Cracker River Park Fest on February the 1st. And that event is a extended country market, and we're hoping to also invite some classic cars. So if you have a classic car, we'd like to bring it to that event. And I think the Carabelle, the Carabelle Artists Association is gonna do the fish rubbing. We may have a music concert as well, so we're putting together the pieces of that. Thank you very much, y'all have a great January.
Thank you, you too. Ms. Tamer, would you like to speak on behalf of the Waterfront Partnership and History Museum?
I would be glad to, thank you. And Happy New Year to you all as well.
And Happy New Year.
We're, we're still trying to figure out what we were supposed to be doing the first two weeks of the year. Recovering from the holidays, but I want to, for those of you who are kinda born and raised here in Carabelle, I really wanted to reiterate my invitation to you to come see Buzz Putnell's paintings of old Carabelle. We'll have it up for several more weeks. But it's, it's really a very nice look at an old time in Carabelle. And the pictures are pretty remarkable. They're not, he wasn't a great artist, but he had a real heart for the city. And the pictures really reflect that. So please stop by and take a look at those things. The main thing that we're doing in the, this month is that we have a, one of our famous history talks that happened this time of year when all the, the loopers and the RVers and so forth are down here. And they're, this is on January the 18th, Saturday, at Seacorders Marina. We have a history talk on Pirates of the Florida West Coast. And this is by a pretty remarkable fellow that some of you may have had the opportunity to, to meet before, Robert Jacob. He is well-known throughout Florida as an expert on the real pirates. Not so much the, the magical ones that we, we hear a lot about in our, our festivals and so forth. But it's a very interesting talk, and he's got a fabulous book about the same topic. So we would encourage you to, to come by and see him. And then we're also, as, as Madam Mayor said, we are getting ready for the culture crawl in March. And we are looking for all kinds of culture activities and antique cars, which have been very popular the last several years. So if you know anybody that's got a car that I could follow up with, just, or you have a car yourself, let me know. We'll actually take old motorcycles, too, if anybody knows anyone with old motorcycles. We could do that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the history talk, does it cost anything to attend this?
No, they're, they're all free.
All right, good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tamer.
Sure.
Any other advisory board reports at this time? We have nothing for public hearings, so we'll move into the quasi judicial hearing. First item is approve or disapprove the final site plan for 209 Northwest 8 for the Carabelle Feed location. Do we have someone here to speak on behalf?
I don't see him here. Nothing's changed. It was unanimously approved by P and Z.
I motion to approve this item.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Milander and a second by Commissioner Patrick. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Item number two is approve, disapprove final site plan for 712 Northwest Avenue B, the Stones Lumber Building. Would you like to introduce yourself? And do you have anything to add?
I'm Don Dubble. I'm the contractor hired to build it, and nothing's changed.
This was also unanimously approved by P and Z.
Okay, thank you.
I'll motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Milander. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, and second by Commissioner Patrick. Do we have any question for Mr. Don while he's here?
Thank you, it's looking nice. Very good.
All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. The quasi judicial hearing is now over. And we'll move on to new business. Item number one, discussion and possible action concerning the presentation by Mr. Forrest Presnell for the old school building at 1001 Gray Avenue. I don't believe Mr. Presnell is here.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this item if Mr. Presnell's not here. And give the administrator an opportunity to confirm whether he's gonna follow up. If not, remove it.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Commissioner Milander. Do we have a second? And seconded by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Yeah, I'm interested to hear what he's gonna say. Item number two is discussion and possible action regarding the Florida 27 recycle presentation by Mr. Richard Bracken.
Happy New Years. My name is Richard Bracken. I reside in Port St. Joe, 7415 County Road 38. The wife and I, Christie, we moved to Port St. Joe three years ago from Atlanta, Kennesaw, Georgia. And during our moving process of unboxing everything, inviting guests and family to our new home, we've, we've learned that Port St. Joe, Gulf County, Franklin County, Bay County, recycling did not exist. And up in Kennesaw, Cobb County, Franklin County, Fulton County, we, we've been recycling for the last 20 years. So we've had this habit. So traveling back and forth from, from Port St. Joe to Kennesaw, we were bringing our recycling back up to Georgia. And we learned that our other neighbors were doing the same thing. Started talking around Gulf County, Port St. Joe, Franklin County. Why was there not a, a more open type of recycling activities? And we've learned that they used to have recycling, drop off bins. And it was misused, abused, and people were treating it as a free dumpster. So just the cost of separating trash from recyclable materials was cost prohibitive. So the recycling activities stopped. Started researching some other businesses across the nation. New Orleans, Albuquerque, New Mexico, Greensboro, North Carolina, Salt Lake City. Specifically looking at businesses that had a voluntary recycling pickup service. Members, subs, customers would voluntarily subscribe for a pickup service of glass, cardboard, aluminum, just all of those different recyclable materials. And talking to them about how successful they were. And they were being successful, but it's just that they had a niche that they would recycle certain things. And people that would want to actually participate would sign up for that pickup service. Salt Lake City has a larger variety of recyclables, from food waste to aluminums, to glass, to cardboard. And it's very successful with them. Their cross contamination rate is, was really low. It's the, it's like in the 5% range. So we started, redoing some research in Gulf County, Franklin County, talking, talking to friends, business owners that have homes, and asking if they would be interested in doing, doing something similar. And they were excited about doing something similar. Spoke to the Chamber of Commerce for Gulf County, Franklin County. And would they be interested in, would, would the county be interested in it? They, they said they would. The only pullback was they didn't know who would be willing to pay for it. So here we are, talking to neighbors and to some of the business owners, and they said they would pay for it. And as a voluntary sign up, subscription piece. So August, September, we introduced it to the Gulf County, Port St. Joe, Appalachia Cola, Franklin County, Mexico Beach, and brought it to their attention. And we, except for Gulf County, we have, we're, we have, we are actively going, collecting recyclable materials in the state of Port St. Joe and Franklin County. That would be Appalachia Cola, East Point, St. George Island. So we've been doing business for about six weeks. We have, we've cracked 100 customers. Not exactly where we were hoping to be, but we did, that's where we are. Our cross contamination rate, we have yet cracked 2%. So the members, the families that have, signing up for recycling activities, they have been keeping their, they've been properly sorting out their recyclable materials from the trash, keeping it, why they, 1.9 is the highest that we've had. Concerns were about the vacation guests coming down. So we have a, a good number of our customers out of Windmark and St. George Island. They are vacation owners. They have vacation homes, they, they rent out for vacation guests. And they've been maintaining the same cross contamination issues. They, we have the signage inside the house, we have the signage on top of the cans. And the vacation guests coming down have been really excited about the recycling activities. So the issue with vacation guests, it will probably get more as, as more of them come in. But at present, the vacation guests that we, we've been experiencing have not abused it. So we've, we hosted a, an introduction at the Florida Seafood Festival a couple months ago in Appalachia Cola, and several families from Carabelle and Alligator Point expressed interest. So that was gonna lead us to think that maybe we would bring it, introduce it to Carabelle and maybe to Alligator Point sooner than later. We wish, cause I actually had some, but not as many guests, families showed interest out of Weewaw than will show at Carabelle. And so being at Carabelle, so close to East Point, Christian asked us, let's give it a try. For our business, we, we provide weekly pickup service. We, we collect aluminum, tin, cardboard, paper, all plastics, and glass. We, we collect it weekly. We provide two other customers a 48 gallon can or an 18 gallon tote, depending on the size of the family, what they would feel best fit their needs and their size of the property. We collect it, we take it, and we have a little warehouse space in, in East Point where we, we, we take our recyclable materials that we collect. We manually sort everything. We take the plastics, one through seven. We probably separate all the plastics into the categories. We separate the cardboard and the paper. We separate the aluminum and tin. So we're, now we're, we're getting to the point, I have a meeting with Rafe and Marpan Monday, and start talking about selling it, because my, my warehouse is getting full unexpectedly. I, I guess it's a pleasant, pleasant unexpectedness, because we didn't know what we would collect and how fast. So we're to the point where we're getting to, having to get with them and start selling our recyclable materials so we can create more space to grow. And I think that's it. Questions?
So I, I do have some questions. I'm Sabrina. I reached out to you because I'm interested in recycling at my home and my business, which is downtown Carabelle. What would you need from the city in order to start this program in our area?
I think with the city, just let you, that you guys allow us to do it. I already obtained a business license, but I've learned that just because I get a business license, I'm not allowed to do it. So, but I, then I guess you reached out to me, I thought it's a potential customer, and I had to say, no, I can't do it right now, because I have to.
Oh, well, I was reaching out as a potential customer, but then here we are.
I've shot myself in the foot a few times, so I try to do things by the rules, by the procedure. So for the city, just making sure that what we are offering to do is be allowed to be, be conducted within the city limits of the Carabelle.
Okay.
For us, because we're so far from East Point, for our business, we, Christian, we're thinking that if, if, once you guys approve it, allow us to do it, we're gonna need about 20, 25 customers that, in the Carabelle market, that would sign up and pay for the service. We would bring it in. I would temporarily, I'm thinking it would be a Saturday pickup, because I, it's getting big. A Saturday pickup, we would take it back to East Point to separate. Once we get up to about 75 to 100, where I'm hoping that we get within a few months, I will probably find, try to find space in Carabelle to, to sort our materials here locally in Carabelle, which would allow us to go into Alligator Point, because it would be a, so, it's so far over there. So then we would have a market from the, I guess, the east side of East Point to Alligator Point. And I would hire people, a person to drive and pick up the recyclable materials. I'll hire a group of people that would be working at the site where we sort and store our materials. And by the time we get to about 100, maybe 200, and that would be the, the ideal market that we would have for the Carabelle. How do you describe it? From west, west, east, East Point to Alligator Point, that would be this territory.
Gotcha, okay. Do you have a question?
Collection points. Collection point is with your, at your customers' premises?
Yes, sir.
Each customer's premise?
Yes, sir.
And I heard you say that you would provide containers?
Yes, sir. We have a 48 gallon bin, has a lid, and then, and you, we have the same problem that you guys have, probably more here, but bears. So we, we provide bear locks. It's, it's a chain that we, that we strap over the top of the lids. So we provide the 48 gallon cans, about the half the size of solid waste bins that you get from BC, from Waste One or Waste Pro. And an 18 gallon tote, it's not, it's not close. But some of the families, they for a smaller 18 gallon tote, and they put the recyclables and materials in it. We pick up from the house, from the residents. We do not do curbside. I don't have curbside easement, so I'd just be consistent that we just pull up to the house of, off the street, go to the house, collect it, unload it, and take it, take our recyclable bins back to the property. And it just, it, I, it just, in Port St. Joe, the, the trash cans that I see that gets toppled over from the trash truck or the construction companies, and then the, the stuff gets littered all over the streets. I live there, and I don't like seeing trash on the streets. And I really don't wanna see my recycle, my products littered the roads, so I just.
Well, you're a step ahead of me, because that was my next question. Because our experience in the past with collection sites strategically placed throughout the county, but there were some here in Carabelle, and they were unfortunately converted from recyclable sites to trash sites. And if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
And I was just, and you just answered that question. Your containers will be at the residence and not on the road shoulder.
Oh, no, sir.
Where they have a potential of turning into a trash collection.
Yes, sir. And what, what I've been doing for the cus, our customers in Franklin County, City of Port St. Joe, every week I send a note to the, to the customers, kinda illustrating how much recyclable materials that we've collected. And then at the same time, for the cross contamination, how much cross contamination have we experienced? And if it's getting large, I try to describe what are we receiving. Somebody included a bag of kitty litter, a bunch of families, because of the holidays, are receiving the freezer gel packs. I can't recycle gel packs, because I, I, I can't empty it.
But that would be between you and your customers?
Yes, sir.
Exactly.
It's just, it's a learning experience. I mean, we're learning it, they're learning it, and, and.
I'm actually excited about, interested in the recyclable collection. I don't have an issue with it, other than I'd like to, uh, make sure that we, everything that we can think of to avoid any negative obstacles.
Absolutely.
Ahead of time.
Uh, as soon as I hear, and I, I guess a good positive comment from a lot of our customers is that, uh, Christie and I, we are on the ball about responding. So we, if we hear a complaint, and we have not heard one yet, but it's coming.
It happens.
It's coming. Uh, but we are, um, we, we reply quickly. I mean, we get questions all the time. What can we, can we collect from here? Can we have drop-off bins? And, uh, Mexico Beach wants us to provide drop-off bins. I've spoken to the, the recycling coordinators out of Tallahassee and Marianna, Florida, Salt Lake City. And as much as I want to do a drop-off bin, and I gave them a proposal, they, they called me up and says, don't do a drop-off bin. It's because, and for us, we're just a startup. My drop-off bin is a two-hundred gallon deck box, and it would get, it, it would get abused.
Thank you.
I was just gonna make my last comment, I guess, that I think it's coming at a great time that you come in before us and, and having this discussion. Uh, I see a lot of change coming within our collection, within the county here. I know the county's, uh, discussing among themselves about garbage collection.
Yes, sir.
Trash collection.
Yes, sir.
Uh, recyclable collection, they're discussing it at every one of their meetings and have been now for several months. And I think we're about to do the same thing here to a certain degree. So it's coming at a time that it's gonna fall right into place with some other things that we're, that's gonna come up for discussion here, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Patrick?
Um, just because people's watching, and probably everybody wants to know this, what is the cost of this?
We're charging, um, right now, we're, we are charging twenty dollars a month. And it provides a weekly pickup service. Now, the rates probably will go up, because I didn't know what my true cost was, were gonna be. I can't see it going up too much more, twenty-five, thirty maybe, but it's, it's gonna stay in that range. It's gonna stay in the range of what people pay for a solid waste pickup.
Right, thank you.
Do you have another question?
I just saw the one other question for customers. If they, if, if you have customers that does not want to have a monthly service and an occasional service, is that something you might negotiate with the customer?
Yes, sir, we have the snowbird special.
Bluebird special, okay.
Snowbird.
Snowbird special.
And we have vacation guest special in St. George Island and Windmark that are here, they're here for two months. And you sign up for the service, they would rather pay us the twenty dollars a month, rather than putting in their car and taking it back to Ohio or whatnot.
Absolutely.
Great, so it's not like a yearly contract, it's, okay.
It's month to month.
Perfect. Do we have any other questions from the commission?
I could just add something to this conversation. Mr. Bracken, I've seen him speak before, it sounds, I mean, he's done a good job creating a business, right? Employing folks and providing service that people, um, people like. We're in a bit of a interesting spot, where we're, just as the county is, we're looking at moving ahead with, um, possibly, uh, an exclusive solid waste provider. Historically, we haven't, obviously haven't done that. It's been, um, which is typ, but all these scenarios are typical, but where you have people just coming in and picking up customers and serving, just as Mr. Bracken's doing. Recyclable materials, in looking at different definitions and things, and Mr. Bracken may have done more research than I, is they, certain types of recycled materials are not considered solid waste, because they're recyclable. Um, but at the same time, some can be, some end up in the flow of solid waste, obviously. And just a consideration that we should bear in mind, because Mr. Bracken can certainly proceed, but you know, just as any other provider could do. It's a courtesy that he came, and it's great to know about it, and our citizens will know about it and everything else. But if, if we move in the direction of a exclusive provider that wants to provide as part of the contract, sometimes they want the recyclable side of it, right? And if we grant a franchise and we're getting our franchise fee, all these things, it, it begins to complicate things. And again, nothing, it would not change your business model right now, but just so everybody's aware of that. Like it's sort of, we, we, we could potentially cut out recyclable from, from any contract we would have with a solid waste exclusive, if we go that direction. I mean, there's so many ifs here, but it is something that we could make our, we provided this three-year notice in order to kinda clear the decks a little bit. Certainly that doesn't prohibit new people from coming in over the last three years. And Mr. Bracken's come in, and again, I don't know if it's apples and apples with solid waste and recycling always, but just FYI for everyone, we gotta, we have a, we gotta weave our way through this smartly, so we don't end up, uh, costing the city more money.
Okay, did you wanna add something?
I do.
Okay.
Oh. Kinda what I was alluding to, Mr. Attorney, with future discussions, and I think it's about to start. Uh, I know they're going on, as you just said, and what I said, with the county, have been now for several months. And I see, from where I'm sitting, there's gonna be a lot of discussion amongst this board in the next few months about different types of collection, as the attorney was describing. It's gonna be, we gonna have discussion about recyclables, we gonna have discussion about yard trash, we gonna have discussion about household trash. There's a lot to be discussed. Uh, there's a lot of different idea, well, not ideas, there's a lot of different operations going on around us right now that does various different things, and that's gonna be part of our discussions, or I feel like it's gonna be part of our discussions. And with that in mind, and if Mr. Bracken, what I'm hearing him asking for tonight is a nod, not a contract from the city, but a nod, Mr. Attorney, if I'm on, if, if I'm going in the right direction legally, a nod that if you want to, knowing the information that you know, that we've just talked about, and, uh, if you want to go ahead and start, if you will solicit in customers for your recycling businesses, maybe this board, if it's approved, give you a nod for you to do that.
And what I would recommend is, it's really information that he's come here today. Sorry, is not required. I, I would not necessarily do any formal action.
I'm not gonna make a motion. The reason why I said a nod, yep.
Right, and that's, our issue with Gulf County, because Gulf County has an exclusive contract with B C C, and that contract includes recycling materials. And we were hoping, because that solid waste for contract provider, they were not, they were not providing the recycling part of that service. The county was going to allow B C C to waive that part of the service and let us do it. But they're not talking. And so we, we're not, we're not allowed to collect from the Cape or St. Joe Beach. Uh, we are allowed to collect within the city limits of Port St. Joe. And we got the nod from Appalachia Cola and Franklin County to do it. That's the same thing. We know we're at risk if, if, if they go into a case, a, a, a contract with a provider, and it includes recycling, and they want to do the recycling, we, we will have to yield that service. And maybe they'll just let us do it for them.
Exactly.
I wanted to add a little bit to what our attorney was saying. You know, you're just asking for the city limits of Carabelle, but that if they do, one of the other contractors goes into an exclusive, there's still plenty of opportunity for you around Carabelle, because I mean, just going up Highway sixty-seven, one side's county, one side's city. And then we have booming growth in Landark, St. James, all the way to Alligator Point, Summer Camp. I mean, there's a lot of opportunity over here still, even if, you know, worst case for you, another company comes in with an exclusive. But we don't know if.
More recycling is, is a good thing.
Exactly. So we do not need to make any motion on this?
Yeah, I advise against a motion yet.
Okay.
Not taking official action, it's appreciated that the pain and everybody's own, you know, information, we trade some information, it's helpful.
Okay, so we don't officially need to tell him?
You're not saying no.
Okay, I believe we do have some questions from the audience, if we could take some time for that. Ms. Kathleen, she had her hand raised first. Would you mind coming up to the microphone? Just so everyone can hear, thank you.
Uh, I was wondering, is this for businesses or for, for, uh, like individuals, like an individual household?
This will be, um, residents and businesses.
Oh, goody.
Thank you.
We can get a consortium on that.
I know, and I believe Mr. Allen had his hand up second.
Uh, I just wanted to invite you, uh, we have, I mentioned.
Microphone. Microphone.
I mentioned that we're having a country market festival that's with vendors. So if you're doing outreach, um, it might be something that you would want to attend our event, and people could come and find out about it and sign up. Excellent, and you can contact the Carabelle Lighthouse Association, and I imagine the same is true for the Culture Pro.
Okay.
I need, I, I, we're gonna start marketing within the next couple of weeks. Uh, probably get with some of these festivals to start, but I need to have at least twenty-five, thirty customers that's gonna commit to the service before.
When would we be able to commit? When would somebody be able to call you and say, hey, I'm in Carabelle, I want to do your recycling? When are you gonna start taking phone calls for customers in the Carabelle area?
Say, give me two weeks.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I don't have a question, I just got a comment.
Okay.
If you go online to Florida Twenty-Seven Recycling, they have an excellent website, and also you can email them if you're interested. I'm gonna say thank you for your presentation. The idea is outstanding to recycle, so appreciate it.
And that's exactly how I found out about this program. I heard about it at the county commission meeting, and then I went on to their website, filled out the little interest form for myself personally, and then we got in contact, and this is how this came about. But, um, could you tell us your website and phone number to be contacted, so that people who are interested can let you know, so you can get those numbers sooner than later?
Thank you. The website address is W W W F L two-seven recycle dot com. So Florida's the twenty-seventh state in the nation.
So that's W W W dot F L two-seven recycle dot com.
Yes, ma'am, and the phone number's eight-five-zero-seven-seven-four-five-nine-zero-eight.
That's eight-five-zero-seven-seven-four-five-nine-zero-eight?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
I'll, I'll have to give Christine an update, but part of the website signup is gonna be for the Carabelle community, where you're not actually buying a, a subscription, but it's gonna be giving a placeholder, so we'll have a tally of how many is actually gonna express interest. And then I'll start getting on Facebook groups within the Carabelle community and talking with the Chamber of Commerce of start marketing, and see, once we hit that number, then we can actually start providing service.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item number three is discussion and possible action regarding awarding the airport bid. And, um, Mr. Courtney, could you go into that a little bit?
This was tabled from last month, and it's just a warning, the bid for the taxiway project at the airport to Geo Flora. And that recommendation was by our engineer, Kim Lee Horn.
And Mr. Large, do you have anything to add to this?
Uh, no, ma'am, we are, we are, sorry, we are not involved with that project.
Oh, sorry. I'm still on the, um, water project. All right.
I've had the opportunity to be fairly familiar with that in the last six months, and, uh, pretty much up to date. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
That was a motion by Commissioner Melander. Do we have a second?
A second awarding the bid for the airport.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Gray. Are there any questions or discussion at this time? All right, all of those in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. Sorry, Ms. Russell. Okay, item number four, discussion and possible action regarding the road closure for the Camp Gordon Johnson Parade.
This would be on March eighth. We normally do ten to twelve, I believe, but I'll get with Mr. Butler and find out the times. And that is just to submit to the state for closure of ninety-eight.
And that starts at?
Usually ten.
Twelfth Street to Marine Tallahassee Street?
Well, Fifth Street, we start detouring them around Fifth Street. They go up by the cemetery, down Avenue C, all the way back down Ryan Drive to Highway ninety-eight.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the road closure for Camp Gordon Johnson Parade.
All right, and that is motions made by Commissioner Patrick. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Walden, any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, that's exciting, I was waiting on the date for that. Item number five is the discussion and possible action concerning the new city logo, and those were emailed out, I believe, in December? It's been a while, no, January, December, yes, it was last month. And this is what, uh, Ms. Michelle from Sign Design, she took our feedback from the last time we discussed it. I sent her everything, I took a picture of the notes and sent it to her. And this is where we are, we're, obviously we can make changes, if you have any other ideas, she's open to it.
I still don't see my light coming up lighthouse.
Well, she actually said that because the light isn't shining all of the time, she personally thought a sun was more appropriate, but if we would like to get rid of the sun and have the light shining out of the lighthouse, we could do that. I personally would like to see a little more green, and I'm not sure if we need the palm trees, it's getting a little busy. But maybe, you know, if we're gonna have the blue police station and lighthouse, have the circle or the Carabelle banner be green? I think so, but I mean, it's up to you guys, it's just, those are my thoughts.
How about the public out there, what they say?
Mr. Steve Allen, would you like to give us some feedback?
I, I talked to you, I was working on, I am working on a couple of designs, so, um, I can continue to do that. For the city logo.
We have, just so you know, hired her.
Well, I know, and I know Michelle, so, I mean, um, mine's for free, so. I, um, one of the things I did was I, um, I used AutoCAD, and I developed, uh, maybe a, a better version of the police station, based on the original police station. Uh, I'd be glad to provide that for Michelle. My suggestion would have been to move, it looks a bit like, um, you know, maybe with Doctor Who, um, the spaceship of the police station, sort of in the air. I agree with your comment, Sabrina, about the, the palm trees, um, it being. Um, I agree with your comment Sabrina about the, the palm trees, um, it being busy. But if you're gonna keep the palm trees, uh, they should be behind the, um, police station.
Mm-hmm.
I think the established is not necessary nineteen eighty, eighteen ninety-three, but it's not very readable. From the standpoint of it's the black on the blue, there's not enough contrast. Any, any? There, I agree with the color, color statement, they're just, um, it's a matter of like, when you're, when you're looking at colors, um, you wanna keep the palette fairly simple. There are some colors in there that have a similar tone, like the, the tower and the police station and the boat. And it's like, if you pull all those into one or two colors instead of three or four colors, it begins to work more as a logo, um, in that way. So even the birds, all those silhouetted items can be one tone.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and other things like that, and so, um, anyway, that's my comments.
Okay. I think, I believe Ms. Kathleen had her hand up first.
If we could have the proper lighthouse colors.
The red and white and black?
And the white, that's.
Okay.
It's not a blue lighthouse.
I, um, since she brought that up, I'm, if you don't mind, we approach it. I, I just finished the first draft of a new logo for the, the lighthouse. You can see how the red and the black layout.
I didn't get that email.
He didn't send it. Okay, Ms. Daleen, did you have some thoughts?
Cause I'm just such a color girl.
Uh, yes.
The, the lighthouse to me, when I'm sitting back there, looks like an oil rig.
Mm-hmm, cause it's all one color?
Yeah, and I loved, um, Vance's idea, if there was some sort of glow in the very top where it looked like a lighthouse, if you could, doesn't have to be projecting, projecting out, but if there was something up there, it just looks, it, it just looks like oil should be coming out, to me. And the other thing.
We don't want that.
No, we don't want that, and I love, I absolutely love the blue and I love the yellow, but the word city of, uh, that color does not go with the other colors.
Okay.
Um, it needs to, it just, it's just out there somewhere and it's just not the right color. But the blues that she picked, uh, like the, the boat and the, the little swirl in the bottom, is absolutely gorgeous. It, it depicts water and that's what we are in this area.
Okay.
I think there's too many colors.
What's your name? I'm sorry, Mark?
Yeah, Oldstein. The lighthouse, like they said, should be, I think should be white and red and just put a spot of white up top. So it looks like a light, so it's not out in front of everybody, but the palm trees need to, I think the palm trees need to go, the birds could probably go. I mean, we're talking about the city, we're not talking about palm trees. We got the police station, the lighthouse and the, um, the fishing boat on the bottom. Like she said, with the orange and the yellow, that city of, you really can't see it. You want this to be, I've done logos for businesses before, you want it to be as plain as you can, you don't want a whole lot of stuff on there. Because if somebody's driving by and they see that sign wherever, they're gonna, what did it say? Because they're looking at everything that's on there and they don't see what, what it says. It needs to be a very basic design without all the extras, in my opinion.
Thank you. Do we have any other feedback? Commissioners, do you have any other thoughts? Okay, I'll go back with her, back to her with all of your ideas. And I agree, there's like ten different blues, maybe narrow it down a little bit. Um, and I'll give you an update next month.
Thank you for your work, ma'am.
No problem, we're not in a rush, we wanna get this right, so just bear with us. Is this, we're gonna have to wear this literally on our sleeve. Okay, item number six, discussion and possible action concerning mandatory garbage. And I believe our city attorney has some information for us because he has worked on this with the city of Appalachia.
Yes, so, what's interesting is this, that, uh, I'll give you kind of an overview of, specific to Carabel, what we've dealt with in the past about now, over three years ago. What's required, they have a, the solid waste industry has a fantastic lobby up at the legislature, apparently, as would be guessed. And there's a section of Florida statutes that deals specifically with municipalities or local governments that move towards going to either provide their own solid waste collection or contract exclusively with someone else to, to provide it, that then results in what they call displacement of existing providers, right? And the legislature, with their assistance of the solid waste folks, passed this statute that makes it very tricky for local governments to, um, displace, really the scenario we have, which is we historically had three. Mr. Mathis, I know being kind of very private, and then you have Waste One and, and Waste Pro providing services in the city. Is that still the case? I'm trying to see Mr. Mathis. The other two are still doing it.
Mm-hmm.
So, and they're both big enough companies, sophisticated enough. And, um, Waste Pro brought this to our attention when we were having some hearings on this back in twenty-one in April or so. So what we did was we went ahead and sent out the, there's a required notice letter, um, that you send out to provide three years' notice to the private companies that you are contemplating going to an exclusive. And in reviewing for this meeting, and I'm gonna talk to the county about this, so I, I don't, we won't need, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, this is what y'all pay me for as far as the nuance. But it looks like they amended it again, right in the timeframe in twenty twenty-one. To, you still provide the three years' notice, that gets you out of, um, if you displaced somebody, gets you out of having to pay, um, significant, um, revenue to them. Basically, they, they, they tell you how much revenue they've, they've, but they, they, they've got language in here now that talks about even if you give them the three-year notice, then we would have a, a hearing, what they call it, an advisability hearing, which we give notice to each of these solid waste providers. They come, they tell us why we should or should not do what we're about to do. And then, there's language in here that looks to me like, it, it's, looks a little contradictory, but it talks about at the end of the three-year notice period, which we are at the end of, the local government shall pay the displaced company an amount equal to the company's preceding eighteen months gross receipts for displaced service, right? Which the penalty is even harsher if you don't give the proper notice, but we, we've given the notice, I'll get to the bottom of that. So, but just to give you all an idea that this is, this is shark-infested water, right? And that may be, for instance, even if they're, and, and it, it closes with a line that says, this paragraph does not prohibit local governments and the company from voluntarily negotiating a different notice period or amount of compensation. So, um, that, that doesn't leave me feeling real good, but it, it, it shows that there's some flexibility and we just gotta navigate ourselves through this. So then let's assume we move in the same direction that, uh, because of ma- of, and I, actually I'm mixing things here, that's to go exclusive, and to go exclusive, typically we would, um, the city for giving that right to somebody, we would receive, um, a franchise fee. And it would typically depend on kind of what we're adding to the process. Sometimes we would do the billing, like it might, it could, it could end, that would be something for future discussion and, and decisions. The other possibility is, um, and it's something we've talked about before, and maybe I'm, I wanna say I'm mixing the two, what are, what's on our agenda, is, yeah, so I am mixing it, so I'm describing to you an exclusive arrangement. If we kept it the same now, and we said, we wanna go, but we're, the other hot topic is mandatory garbage pickup. So that's really what's on the agenda. So you go to mandatory garbage pickup, we could do it on an exclusive basis, we could do it on a non-exclusive basis. So we could tell people still within the city, hey, pick your provider, but you gotta have a provider because it's mandatory. Like you have to have household solid waste pickup. And that, that has been a hot topic in the city for many, many years as well, it's why we don't have it. But it has come up and it's been controversial. So, um, I will continue and, and certainly take questions, but I'll continue to, um, I'll, I'm gonna talk to the county as far as what, I know they, they, I believe, sent a notice letter out too. The note is that when they made the change, they, they, very trickily, said, and we don't, we don't qualify for this, was that, um, they put a note on the statute, the legislature did, when they made that amendment, and they said, this act does not apply this, this, to any displacement as defined, basically displacement, if the local government provided three years' notice to the displaced private company or companies on or before December thirty-one, twenty twenty. So that's just not.
So we were before?
Window, we, we didn't discuss it even within that window. So it's not like we missed it through any lapse, but it's just, the, you know, the, I'm sure they, they had some people screaming that, hey, wait a minute, before you put this burden on local governments, we gave that notice, you know, back in eighteen or nineteen or whatever, our three years is running at the same time you're changing the statute. So they did a, a fix on it to, to prevent kind of catching people in between. That doesn't apply to us, so we, our notice was in twenty-one. But again, just to, to make it, make it look, you, I'll, I'll earn my, earn my keep on this one. If we go exclusive, if we choose not to go exclusive, then we still have to wrestle with the question of mandatory garbage pickup. Are we gonna make it, and, and that's something we would do, um, by ordinance. We would simply, our citizens, we, we'd mandate that within a certain period of time, there would be mandatory garbage pickup in the city of Carabel. So, and that one, I'll let you all discuss that as far as the, um, and the public has sometimes had, uh, been very vocal about it.
Yes.
You know, their garbage a certain way for a long time, and they.
And I was ready for us to schedule a workshop because this is gonna take, again, a long time, a lot of thinking and figuring out how and if we wanna go through with this, and we don't wanna rush it. But it sounds like we have some more legal questions that may need answered before we even go to that step.
What I'll do, what I, what I would recommend is I can get, I'll talk to the county, I will get, I will have answers, a little better, some more answers on that as far as if we go exclusive or not. What would be interesting would be, and calling it a workshop, it would be the same thing. This, this hearing that's called for under the statute is, um, they just talk about an advisability hearing. We could probably merge, we could have those two issues discussed at that hearing. We could have that hearing to hold, cause a hea- I mean, it's a hearing, it's a workshop. Um, we could have, we could kill two birds with one stone by having that.
But are we to that point?
We're not, so I'm saying at the next meeting, you could schedule that.
Gotcha.
I'm going.
So we need more information from you, so maybe we table this to the next meeting and then you give us some more feedback and we'll go from there.
Now, but now, this is the, I have muddled the two issues together, but they are separate issues. Meaning mandatory garbage pickup and will we, does the city want to make that, have an exclusive provider inside the city limits? So workshop even on ma- whether or not we want mandatory garbage pickup. I mean, that, that has historically, and I know, I'm, I'm talking about history, just legal history here, because I, I was, I was the attorney when all this was going on. I remember you had a lot of folks that said, hey, it's really gonna clean up, we, we don't like the, the garbage around town, it's gonna clean things up. But then once we had a workshop and a hearing, it seemed like a great idea, a lot of places have it. But then, once it was announced publicly, you had folks come out of the woodwork that it was almost like the alcohol, a little less, but similar, that got very upset that they, um, I mean, I, I don't wanna mischaracterize it, but that they disposed of their own garbage their own way and they didn't want anybody messing with it. And that carried the day, we, we, we did, we have not yet mandated mandatory garbage.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion that we table, until the next meeting where the attorney can follow up as he described with the county on the legal issues for process. And also, uh, ask him to catch up with the county on their discussions for the last two or three months that they've had publicly on where he said we need a workshop, whether we want mandatory garbage or not, cause there's a lot to be decided. It's not just your household trash that we gonna have to talk about. We gonna have to talk about yard trash, we gonna have to talk about land clearing. We got a lot of issues to talk about, and I feel like they're gonna be in conjunction with the county cause if the county quits the yard trash, we don't have the equipment and personnel to continue to pick up the yard trash. So there's a lot of things that we have to talk about. And there's pros and cons with the mandatory, as there is without the mandatory. I did just minor research with some of these folks that have mandatory. And there's things that we haven't thought about that they've experienced already with mandatory that's not real attractive. Some of it is attractive. So, anyway, my motion is, is to table this till the next meeting and the attorney can gather more information legally and on where the county's at with their discussions on mandatory trash collection. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Commissioner Melander, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Walden. Do we, do we have any discussion currently on this motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I under- I understand that the lawyer needs to handle the exclusive for the language in that. However, a workshop would still be good because if we don't go exclusive, is that just the end of the conversation? Or are we gonna talk about mandatory trash a different way? Um, as in code enforcement or code or whatever. And all these other topics that needs to be talked about, still needs to be talked about. So we're just kicking the can down the road by tabling it and not setting a workshop to get the conversation started.
We have a motion to table it and a second, but I understand your concern. This is not gonna be done overnight, it's not gonna be done in a couple of months. There is a lot of legalities and different options and things to consider with this. So I would like to get as much of the legality side covered before we go into talking about all the different options we have, cause that might help narrow it down a little bit.
And one other thing, Commissioner, is what I was trying to express from what I've learned listening to the county commission meetings, is some of the decisions that the county makes on their garbage collection countywide is going to affect our decisions.
Mm-hmm.
And if we don't have that information, we don't know what to do. Then we are just beating a dead horse.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any other discussion, anything, would you like to come up, Mr. Seager? Not yet, we're discussing.
Ken Seager. I am either fortunate or unfortunate enough to own a various properties up in Michigan. One of them is in town, so I can deal with the city. And I also own out in the township, which you don't have townships down here, but the county would be applicable. So for my township garbage pickup, that goes on my property taxes. For the city pickup, it goes on my water bill. And I am all in favor of mandatory trash pickup for the sole reason that not everybody deals with their trash other than to trash out their yard. And though my wife has had me at various symposiums as to, um, be more understanding about people that, um, tend to leave things in the yard and never touch it again. Uh, it, you've got a beautiful city here, I love this place, it is gorgeous. Unfortunately, there's some places, if you go through the neighborhoods, that. Unfortunately, there are some places, if you go through the neighborhoods, that it's not so pretty. And I, and I, and I really believe that the mandatory, whether people like it or not, is not up for question. You, you need a mandatory, no matter how you deal with it. I'm not a fan of property taxes, okay, but it has to be dealt with some way. So, and a little town that I come from is maybe just, maybe twice as big as what Carabelle is. It's not that much larger. And that's, oh, the other thing I was going to say is that when they do do that, how they deal with it is they put it up for bid. And I don't know if it's, I doubt if it's one year, but it's probably like a three-year, that they have the contract, and then it goes up for bid again. So that it's not always the same person that has it. They, they actually come in and trade out the trash cans for their own trash cans when, when they do this. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, and I hope you come to our workshop when we get one scheduled.
Absolutely.
Come on up. Okay.
Mandatory trash pickup. We have to do something in the city. I have people that live behind me that don't have mandatory trash pickup, and they have trash bags sitting out for five, six, seven days, eight days. They just drop them outside their front door, and then when the trash comes, they run them over to their neighbor's house, and they put them in their trash can. It, I mean, you drive down some of these streets, and there's trash, just, I just picked up a dog that was running around town, who is now terrorizing my house, and the house that he came from, there's two trash cans that have been there for seven months. We went back and looked, seven months, they've been sitting there full of trash, but they didn't pay their trash bill, so the trash company won't pick them up. And they're just sitting out in their yard, and they keep throwing more and more trash around these trash cans that they're not paying for. Well, that brings in rats. It brings in rodents. It brings in bears. It brings in stray dogs, cause we have, that's the other problem we have here, is stray dogs, where people just let them run wild. We have to do something to clean the city up. It's, I will, I moved here three years ago from Atlanta. I hate, never going back, other than to see family, and they can come see me if they want. But when I lived in a subdivision, we had mandatory trash pickup. You had, you weren't allowed to keep a boat in your yard that hasn't been in the water in twenty years, and it's covered in trash. They're throwing their trash in these boats and in these cars. It's dangerous. It's dangerous for kids that are running around. It's dangerous for, just all around dangerous. We have to clean the city up. Like he says, it's a great city. I love living here. I mean, I've been coming to Carabelle and Appalachia Cola for probably thirty years now on vacations, finally decided to move here. But we have to make the city a clean city where people wanna come and bring their money. It's like, we go to Appalachia Cola, we go, we say, we're going out of town, spending our out-of-town money in Appalachia. I want people to spend their out-of-town money here, but if they drive down a street and there's ten boats sitting in a guy's front yard that haven't been moved since God knows when, we gotta get them cleaned up. We gotta get the city streets and the street signs. That's a whole nother, I'll talk about that next month. But the streets, we're missing half the street signs. We have to get the city cleaned up so that people wanna live here. I mean, it's coming this way whether we want it to or not. Go to Crawfordville. It's coming this way. It's coming this way from Port St. Joe. It's, we're right in the middle, and we're the only things left where people could move if they wanna live in old Florida. But if they wanna live in old Florida, they wanna live in a clean old Florida, not in a you know, you have a gorgeous house and right next door to it, the guy's throwing his trash out.
Thank you.
Not cleaning.
We understand, and if you do notice any street signs that are missing, if you could give City Hall a call and just let them know on the corner or whatever, we can get those ordered. Okay, perfect.
Has them because he did a big order, and they have came in, so he does have a bunch of them. They just need to get them up.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or concerns about this topic for now? It will be on the agenda for the foreseeable future, I'm sure. Okay, we have that motion to table by Commissioner Melander, seconded by Commissioner Walden. All of those in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
You oppose to tabling? Okay, we have four, four, and Commissioner Pedrick against. And that motion carries. Right, we have no old business, so that wraps it up for this evening. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.